Welcome to the March 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Before we go into our prayer by Mr. or Councilmember Kurt Wade, I would like just to recognize that lost a friend to the city of Murfreesboro, Jason Reynolds, with the Murfreesboro Post, passed away last week. And so Jason covered our city council meetings. He was at most all of our workshops. And Jason was an outstanding individual, a strong man of faith. And I think he was battling illness that none of us ever knew about. He was still there at all of our meetings. So really want to give our condolences and our heartfelt thoughts and prayers to the Reynolds family, the Murfreesboro Post family, and to say not only thank you for what you did for Murfreesboro, but individually with all of us, how you covered the city of Murfreesboro dignified and honestly and truthfully. So if you would, please bow with me for a moment of silence. Amen. Mr. Wade?
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessing you bestowed on us. Lord, we just thank you for your grace and mercy. Lord, we ask you protection for our country. Lord, we ask you protection for Murfreesboro. Bless our first responders. Lord, we just ask you to continue to bless over and watch over us and let us make right decisions on what's best for our city. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the high and to the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Pursuant to the governor's executive order, we are holding our meeting virtually. I think Vice Mayor Skels Harris, are you there?
I am, Mayor.
All right. Great to hear your voice. I want to let you, let anyone know that you still can participate in these meetings at least for until the governor's executive order expires by Zoom or any other virtual media. All right. We'll now move into, we have a Stars Award that we want to present. Ms. Russell is going to present that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, we recognize Jeff Todd as a Stars winner for the month of February. On February 8th, Jeff, a crew leader for the street department, was driving down Joby Jackson Parkway and noticed a lot of smoke coming from the side street. He could also smell something burning. As he turned onto the street, he saw a duplex with smoke billowing out of the roof. Jeff immediately called 911. He knocked on all the doors and windows to notify anyone that may have been inside. Thankfully, no one was at home. When the county fire department arrived, the fire was visible on the side of the duplex. Jeff's quick thinking helped save the dwelling and personal belongings of this family. Jeff was nominated by Tracy Brown, budget analyst for the street department. Please join me in thanking Jeff for going above and beyond and providing exceptional service.
My goodness. I hate to get started, but man, I tell you, Jeff has been a phenomenal employee. He started out at Water and Sewer, many years with the city, and had an opportunity to come to the street department. And we didn't miss a chance to jump all over Jeff. And it's been a blessing for the entire city. We just love having him. He just recently got promoted to supervisor's position. So Jeff just has a bright future. We just appreciate him greatly. Thank you.
I think the council will agree. That's, the Stars Award are one of the funnest moments and best moments that we get to have at council meetings. And there's not a day that goes by that I don't hear a story, literally, whether it's from public safety or street department or someone about the employees of Murfreesboro. So thank you all for what you do for the over 1,000 people who work here at the city. And you make us proud every single day. And especially Jeff. That's something we all teach. If you see something, say something. And that's a great example of leadership and going above and beyond. All right. We'll move into our consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled off of the consent agenda?
If not, so move.
Second. Motion, second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move into the minutes for the city council, February 4th, 2021, to March 11th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move into old business. We have under land use matters, we have a rezoning along West Thompson Lane. This is planning. Blomley?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. This item was deferred at the December 17th, 2020 city council meeting, conducted a public hearing at that time. And council expressed several concerns. I'll go over those concerns. And then Mr. Roundtree has a few words to say regarding how he has addressed those concerns. You'll recall, this project is located along the north side of West Thompson Lane, just to the west of North Borough Court. And the project included a mixture of townhomes and single-family detached. Density was one of the issues that was raised during the city council meeting on December 17th. Since the, since that meeting, the applicant has reduced the number of townhomes by six. So the number of townhome units is now at 40, where it was 46, decreasing the overall unit count in the development from 74 to 68. And the overall density has decreased from 5.64 dwelling units per acre to 5.21 dwelling units per acre. There was also a concern raised regarding the garages for the townhome product. And all of the one-car garages for the townhome product have been eliminated. And I think that was what, what spurred some of the reduced density was that the, the units became wider and the number of units was, was reduced as a result. So all of the proposed townhomes, all 40, will now have two-car garages. Additionally, there was some concern regarding the lack of elevations, the lack of architectural elevations for the single-family residential detached product. There was really one elevation that was shown, kind of with a mixture of board and battened fiber cement siding and one version with all brick. What the applicant has done is he has provided several other options in addition to, to that particular house plan. And so I'll put a few of those up on the screen. Now, Mr. Roundtree will come up and say a few words about the, the changes that they've made. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we've already conducted the public hearing. So there is no public hearing advertised on this matter for night, for tonight. You'll just need to vote on first reading.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right. Mr. Blomley, I do have a quick question. Is Auburn in the NCA tournament?
No, no, they're not. They were, they were smart. They knew they weren't going to make it. So they took their self-imposed penalty this year.
Okay. All right. Sorry, that wasn't related, but wanted to ask that question. All right, Mr. Roundtree.
Mayor McFarland, commissioners, who is in the tournament that you're interested in?
What's that?
Who's your team?
I, I don't have one.
So you just had to re-meet.
They were eliminated, they were eliminated in the first round. So.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Matthew mentioned, there's several things we did to adjust the overall plan to kind of meet the expectations of the planning staff and the commissioners. And we're glad to do that. And it's been great to work with them, to work through the process. And I think, I think Mr. Fritzen and Mr. Wilson, the team, who's the development team for their support, walking through this process. This project has gone through a lot of iterations and we're glad to get to, hopefully, is the final run. But with that in mind, some of the key components, just from the get-go, originally, when Mr. Fritzen purchased the property, it was only one parcel of property. He was encouraged to get the adjacent piece of property. So that was something that was done very early in the process. So he'd have two adjoining properties. As a result of that, it kind of created an island. There's one parcel of land that is the home of the owners who sold the property. So we are surrounding that piece of property with our development. And in the future, Mr. Fritzen plans on buying that piece of property as well. He's addressed that person. He's asked that he could buy it. And they don't want to sell right now. So in addition to purchasing the property, we originally had two circle drives for traffic calming reduction. We've gone to one, but that's something we feel like is real asset to this development. So if there's further development to the north, the traffic calming circle will be a key part of the future. That was something that was a concern from the planning staff, and we responded to that. And we think it's a really nice addition to development. It really adds some visual interest as well. Around that circle drive is basically the core of our green space and open space. And we were able to exceed both our green space requirements and our formal open space requirements, which is, I think it's a, a nice gesture from the engineering side to make sure that that was accommodated. And we feel good about the green space as well, that is centrally located in development. And as there's further development around it, I think it'll be something that's easily accessible by all the, by all the owners in the, in the development. One of the things that was concerned was the amount of guest parking. And we have 18 guest parking spaces. They're located throughout the development. That was another concern. Rather than have it all concentrated in one area, they're split in three different areas, three different six-space sections are included. Landscaping wise, we do have our detention areas up front, which is something I know that's kind of a concern these days with the new ordinance. However, we are anticipating treating these retention ponds with more an aesthetic treatment landscaped, much more visually interesting than just your typical detention area. And we also feel that that's going to provide green space along Thompson Lane, at least a recess feeling for the development. So when you drive down, you're going to see more green space in your old homes. We think that's a real asset to this development. As Matthew mentioned, we're challenged to provide more facades. And, and Mr. Fritzen gladly accommodated that. One of our original expectations from the neighborhood was that we'd have all brick homes. And so we worked with the North Borough neighborhood, which is to the east of us. Two of the concessions that we made with them was one, that we provide drainage for them. If possible, they have a drainage issue that's coming from the north. When Mr. Burns built General's Landing, he was able to create a swell on the eastern part property line that allowed that eastern side of North Borough to have some relief that they wanted to tie into a swell. Mr. Fritzen agreed to the same thing on the north side. So we'll have, they'll have the ability to tie into the swell that will be running along the, I'm sorry, along the western property line of our development. So we can help alleviate some of their concerns as far as drainage. As far as architecturally, they asked that any home that was adjacent to their property, it would be all brick. So we've committed to all brick rear facades. We do have an option for an all-brick option on the home, but what Mr. Fritzen wanted us to, to make sure we reinforced, that we are providing five different options for home styles, but really, there's more combinations than that. We just wanted to make sure we had a good representation of what could potentially happen. Some of the homes are double-gable wood dormers, some are, you know, single-gable wood dormers. Some have front porches, some have stoop porches. So there's a wide variety of home styles that we're committing to. As far as Matthew mentioned, it's an overall reduction of four units, and it brings our density down lower. And that was a concern overall, the density. But being at five units per acre in this climate is, we feel like is, is fitting for this area. We do want to be comparable to the subdivisions that are down Thompson Lane, both Tuscany, General's Landing, and further down the line. So we want to make sure we're, we're compatible with those in terms of quality and, and more than likely, price point as well. Lastly, I just want to, you know, we just worked through a process trying to make sure that all the expectations of, of creating an excellent community would be met. We appreciate Margaret Ann's influence and Matthew's influence and the planning staff's influence and, and the planning commission's direction. And I really appreciate Mr. Fritzen and Mr. Wilson and just their patience and perseverance of moving through a process that, that's really, I think, come up with an excellent product at the end. So with that in mind, as Matthew mentions, a brief presentation. But I'm here for any questions you may have or anything that we can add to your curiosities. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? Mr. Roundtree, thank you. I want to disclose, I did not realize this until I started meeting with the developer after this, but the developer, one of the partners, I wouldn't say the developer is, is a business partner of mine in another venture. And so I'm going to, did not know that at the time. And I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, any questions? No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain. All right. We'll now move into new business, where we have ordinance 21004. This is a fiscal year 21 budget amendment ordinance, and this is from administration. Ms. Tucker?
Good evening. We have budget amendments tonight for several funds. The general fund amendment includes additional expenses for street, economic development, parks and rec, community development, and transfers to drug fund. These items are balanced with anticipated increased hotel motel taxes, wholesale beer taxes, community development grants, and increased drug fines. We also have the debt service amendment, which reflects the 2012 TMBF loan refinancing from October, and that is balanced between the bond proceeds and expenses. The drug fund amendment reflects additional drug funds and anticipated increases from general fund and the corresponding expenses there. And then finally, we have the other capital sources fund amendment, which reflects the county shared bond proceeds and includes expenses to cover schools' capital needs for this year. I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend these items for approval.
So move.
Second. Motion, second. Ms. Brown?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Tucker. I know we are, seeing you here, we are all looking forward to discussing budget. All right. We have ordinance, under land use matters, we have ordinance, under ordinance, we have rezoning property along South Bilbo Avenue. This is planning. We'll need to conduct a public hearing to rezone approximately 1.28 acres. Ms. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The property is located at the northeast corner of South Bilbo Avenue and East State Street. It's five single-family residential parcels. They're all zoned RS8 and also located in the city core overlay district. I haven't been out there in a little bit. Mr. Burns, are those structures demolished yet?
They're gone.
The structures are gone. So there are five vacant lots. Believe those structures were in pretty, pretty bad disrepair from what Mr. Burns has indicated to us previously. But they are, have all been torn down. And Mr. Burns is requesting a rezoning to PRD for these five parcels, planned residential district. The property would also remain in the city core overlay district. Mr. Burns seeks to develop a townhome development with 18 dwelling units on the property, which would be a density of about 14 dwelling units per acre. So it's 1.28 acres, 18 total dwelling units. The surrounding area is predominantly zoned RS8 and CCO, and it's predominantly comprised of single-family residential uses, although there is a non-conforming duplex directly to the north of the subject property. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan calls out this to be a suburban residential land use character. This is a area that is inner city core. As I mentioned, the suburban residential land use character is more of an air, of a land use character that we see on the periphery of the city and calls out for a density of between two and 3.54 dwelling units per acre. So it's, it's not consistent with the recommendations of the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan. However, the city council has the ability to determine whether or not this would be an appropriate instance to deviate from the recommendations of the plan. Staff is supportive of this rezoning request, including the deviation from the future land use map for the following reasons. The proposed residential land use will be compatible with the surrounding residential land uses, in staff's opinion. Compact, dense development is desirable in and around the downtown and promotes walkability. And number three, the proposed development will contribute to the vitality and quality of life of the downtown, continuing the positive trend toward reinvestment in the area. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter and voted to recommend its approval to the city council. Mr. Clyde Roundtree has a brief PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give to you on this request. Mr. Roundtree is here, as is Mr. Brian Burns, the developer. I'll be happy to answer any questions. One thing that I did want to point out, I laid on each of your desks a, a letter from Mr. Anthony Brothers, who is a neighbor at 220 First Avenue. Mr. Brother spoke at our planning commission public hearing, and he was intending to speak again tonight, but decided not to do so because of the weather. And he sent in a letter, and I told him that I would pass that along to the, to the city council members. I'll be happy to answer any questions at any point for you. And here's Mr. Roundtree.
Mayor McFarland, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, host of Steel Engineering. Thank you, Matthew, for the introduction. I'd like to say, first off, thank you to Mr. Burns for his commitment to continue to develop downtown and commit to making it as nice as possible. And, and leveraging some of the faculties we have in place for planning with the CCO, but, but just as importantly, showing a real strong commitment to, to take out homes that are in rougher conditions and go ahead and try to bring something nice to the community. We've learned a lot through this process already. As we, as we see development coming in downtown, there's all kinds of mixed reviews on how that actually plays out. And some people have real concerns, and other people are very excited. We did have a neighbor across the street who was very excited that this was coming in because she made quite an investment on her home, put some money in redeveloping her home, and she was glad to see that new investments are being made. So with that in mind, I just wanted to do a brief presentation for the role on Bilbo. This image gives you a little bit of the character. I've never really spoke about this in particular, but I think it's important to say that a lot of the homes that we're working with in downtown sections, the formal open spaces are becoming internal to the property. That's twofold reasons. First off, we really want the architecture to kind of address the street. So that's one thing that is happening. The other thing is to give them a sense of privacy inside the development. So this is a, a visual image of the formal open space that is between the two sections of buildings. All right. As far as the, it is an info project. This was unique in the fact that there are five pieces of property that were adjacent to each other, joined basically by one ownership. And the owner passed away, and the homes went up for auction. Mr. Burns saw the opportunity to do a significant development downtown. So he was able to take down all five homes with the interest of developing 18 new homes in this area. Just as far as the overall character, these are some of the homes. Well, these are homes across the street. If you look at the bottom left corner, that's a home on, basically, directly across the street, as well as the one on the lower right-hand corner. That is on the side, the side road. Kind of gives you a little bit of the architectural character. The two shots on, on the top are basically looking down Bilbo Street. These are the homes that Mr. Burns has taken down. They were all rental homes in their prior life. And, and they, they're cute. They're, they're nicely designed homes, but they've been in disrepair for many, many years. And then the storms that have come through, several had, you know, really poor roofs and roofs that are falling over. So it was becoming a blight to the area. What we are proposing are two different styles of homes, as far as not architecturally, but we want to have two-bedroom homes as well as three-bedroom homes. The homes that are facing both East State Street and Bilbo are three-bedroom homes with rooftop patios on top. The homes in the back portion are two-bedroom homes. It'll be surface park. So the homes on the front will have two-car garages with two-car spaces, these parking spaces behind. The homes in the rear will be all surface park. The center section I mentioned from that original picture that we started with, that's the formal open space. And that will primarily, more than likely, be used by the two, the two-bedroom homes in the rear of the property. But we also thought it was very important, as we mentioned, the formal open space is internal to the development, and also the fact that the architecture addresses the street. And having rear entry parking allows that to happen. You know, see that in Nashville, it's all alley, a lot of it's alley, alley-loaded. This is very similar in the fact that all the parking's basically out of sight from the road. We think that's a really nice element to, to bring into the master plan. We did have, at staff's request, that these are, it's a private hauler, which means that the poly carts are going to be stored in a storage room behind the, behind the homes from the garages. And we have a sidewalk that allows the, the owners of the property to go ahead and bring their poly cart down. If the, if the valet hauler comes in, they have a sidewalk to bring the, the, the poly carts down in the rear of the two-bedroom units. The mail kiosk is central to development. We did provide, this was a, a question that the staff had in the future, if the, if the private hauler doesn't work out, the valet hauling doesn't work out, we provided a space that we know in the future could accommodate a dumpster, if a dumpster is needed. And that is dashed in this, in this plan on the top portion of the development. So we know that that, if it's ever a consideration where it's a problem, Mr. Burns knows he has an allocated space which he can utilize for a future dumpster. The homes are contemporary in nature. They are painted brick with metal awning out front, architectural, real, you know, kind of architecturally oriented windows. The front, the garages are contemporary in style. All the light fixtures will be contemporary in style. It'll have two-tone brick, and that, that, the darker band along the top is a parapet wall that will basically screen the, the rooftop garden, I mean, rooftop patios from the road. There is a, basically a stairwell on the top that you can see in the center, the center elevation. That's just depicting where the stairs come on to the rooftop area. These are the two-bedroom units that are in the rear portion. They're obviously narrow in nature, but all the similar architectural character is those on the front, along Bilbo and along East State Street. The only difference was, that I was mentioning, was that these have individual storage units on the back. They do two different things. They allow for your poly cart to be stored. They also allow Brian to put a water heater in that space. And they, they provide a partition between the homes. So you have a little bit more privacy on your back porch. Landscaping wise, we're requesting a type B buffer along the, that'd be the eastern and northern property line, as well as a PVC privacy fence. Along the front, we wanted to enhance foundation landscaping to give it a lush feel, as well as street trees along East Street, Street and Bilbo Street. And then we have some internal landscaping around the formal open space as well. As far as amenities, this was an interesting process as far as downtown development. So many people downtown are, are working towards having some sort of a rooftop element for outdoor entertainment. These will have large outdoor patios on the roof. We did realize through the process that at one point, we were trying to include those in our formal open space because they would be used as a formal open space. However, they did not count towards our cum total required formal open space. So we provided the formal open space that has the fire pit area and the round, and the two kind of dog walking areas, and just really enhanced landscaping that we think will primarily be used by the two-bedroom units. But it is something that the three-bedroom units can access as well. But we're excited about seeing the rooftops. We think they're going to be a real nice asset to the development. And one thing just to know, the rooftops have a, a six-foot parapet wall. So when you're on those rooftops, your primary orientation is off towards the rear. The rear is going to have more of a, some sort of a railing system. So that was one of the questions is if you're on the rooftop, we have privacy from the, you know, the adjacent neighbor. And the fact that these walls are tall enough, that give you a sense of privacy inside your own rooftop area. We did have some deviations from the zoning ordinance that are important to recognize. We had a reduced front setback and rear setback. We had a reduced front setback and rear setback. That's pretty consistent. The reduced front setback is something we're seeing a lot in terms of the developments downtown. And that's primarily because, as mentioned earlier, we want to have parking in the rear if at all possible. And we want to address the street more urban and more of an urban style. We did request for the rooftops to be included in the formal open space, but that was not necessary for us to meet our calculation requirements. As far as the homes, the ordinance requires 18 inches of step up to come into the homes. We have requested a six-inch step up, and that's really basically, Mr. Burns likes the homes lower. It's just more accessible, both from the garage and from the front. So that was a request. And then the valet garbage service is something kind of new. That is kind of a new trend that's happening downtown. So as we mentioned, we provided access and a space in the future if we need a dumpster. But right now, we're planning on hiring solid waste management, outsourcing that. And as far as the buffer reduction, it's a B buffer with a fence. And that would be a reduction from a D-type of buffer. But those are the deviations that are documented in the pattern book. We feel like they're reasonable in the fact that Mr. Burns is making a substantial commitment to come downtown, to continue the thrust towards moving downtown to more of a quality living environment. And we do think, because of the size and the two bedrooms, there'll be a mixed use as far as a mixed population who buys into this area. And we think the two-bedroom option really provides a nice entry-level home for a young family. And then the three-bedroom allows them to graduate for onward if they have more children. So as downtown develops, we're going to see kind of that combination. But we're glad to make, you know, meet the parking requirements, meet the open space requirements, the formal open space requirements, and bring something aesthetically pleasing to downtown. So with that in mind, Mr. Burns is here. If he has anything to add, anything to add, Brian, at this point. We're available for any questions you may have, and thank you for the opportunity to present.
Any questions for Mr. Roundtree before we hold a public hearing? All right, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. We'll now need to, we'll hold a public hearing for the rezoning of approximately 1.2 acres. If you'd like to come speak, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name and your address, if you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. Otherwise, you'll have three minutes. If you'll keep all questions directed to the City Council, we will get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider ordinance 21OZ03.
Move for approval.
I'll second, but I was going to make some comments if that's okay.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Sure. I just want to, Mr. Burns, tell you how much I appreciate what you're trying to do downtown. I know there's always, you know, economic incentive motivated in anything business-related that people do. But also know that's not the only reason you do that, based on some of the other things I've seen you do at Vine Street and other places. So I think it's a great-looking project. I think it creates more housing stock in the core, which is consistent with what we've talked about doing. I walked, I walk a lot downtown now, but I walked by this project twice this week. And when you think about what you're going to deliver there in comparison to what was there previously, we're really, really lucky to have you making those investments. So I appreciate what you're doing.
I'll second that.
Yeah. You know, I didn't say this at the last public hearing, but with Mr. Roundtree, the discussion that we had on King's Ridge or King's Landing really brought about a lot of discussion overall. We had a joint Planning Commission meeting after that discussion and specifically talking about Bilbo and Lee Avenue or Lee Street. And I think a lot of the things that you look at from the standpoint of asking for variations, I think what the council, we all said, those are not major on the major and minor on the minors. And those are the minors when you look at the overall project that we're willing to make some of those deviations because of the investment that's going to occur. And, you know, a rising tide raises all ships. So the person who comes and breaks through the wall first, they may get some benefits that others don't get later on down the line, and that's okay because someone's willing to make that investment. So to echo what Councilman Martin said, this is much better than what was there, and we look forward to seeing how this helps change the whole area in the years to come. We have a motion and a second.
One more comment, our question, this, Mr. Roundtree or Mr. Burns, either one. Since the trash, valet garbage service is a new kind of concept, could you explain or just talk about that a little bit so we can kind of get a concept of what we're talking about?
It is basically just a local company that will come in and take the trash cans off the back porches, similar to the people that live in the county outside the city. And they load the trash up, and they take it with them, and they don't have the big trucks and stuff. When you put a dumpster right there on the front, it's just too tempting for people to want to chuck a TV over in it.
I appreciate this concept, to me, as a way of keeping those areas that tend to collect a lot of unsightly trash.
And just the dumpster itself's not very slightly, so.
It's not very slightly. I appreciate the thought that goes into doing something like that, and it also doesn't come back on our solid waste department to try to figure out how to get in and out of your area.
We're going to actually try it over even on Hidden Rivers where you've got 600 townhomes.
Oh, that's awesome.
So we still think it'll be easier. And once again, you don't have an unsightly dumpster.
I very much appreciate that effort.
Thank you.
Bill, you're seeing that in Williamson County in a subdivision I'm in frequently. It's a single-family subdivision. And so what you're seeing, that service now being provided where actually the valet service goes up the driveway, grabs the can and brings it out, so you don't end up with cans parked all over the street, which is, you know, is tough sometimes when you've got that many homes and cans lined up everywhere. So it's a, I think it's a service that you're going to start seeing. It's not cheap, but it's a service that you're going to start seeing pop up.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Brown, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have a sewer allocation variance along Old Salem Road for the Journey Home.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and stand before you with a proposed development request for additional density above the sewer allocation ordinance and zoning allowance for the Journey Home Mission and Group Shelter along east side of Old Salem Road, north of Samsonite Boulevard. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, state's capacity is available, and they have approved the request. I stand before you to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. McKnight about this variance? No questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to on motion. We have an amendment to existing contract for impact fees. Mr. Tindall.
Yes, this is an amendment to the contract with Tishler Vice. You recall that we've had a couple of meetings now talking about impact fees. And last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, at our workshop, council requested Mr. Vice to add to his scope of work and just give us a quote, and so we have that. And if you have any questions, happy to answer that or have Mr. Whitaker answer. 479. Thank you. 479.
479?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Craig, something we may want to look at. We did have, as we were reviewing these in our agenda, we used to drive an agenda box that we could click on specific items, and we don't have that anymore.
Bookmarks? I have it on mine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, do y'all have it on yours now?
No, but I just assumed it was operator on my part, so.
I don't have it on mine either.
You have it on yours?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I can go directly to it.
We'll, we'll, a little training.
My VCR still blinks 12 o'clock, if you can fix that, too, so.
When you get old, you see.
Yeah, I get it. All right, we have, we don't have a motion, but can we get a motion?
I think this is reasonable. I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Motion is second. And Mr. Tindall, legally, as we talk about those things, we legally have to do this if we're going to consider it, correct?
Right, there has to be established access, and that's what our consultant provides us.
Yep, okay. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to item 14, a contract with Quadrex Aviation LLC for airport safety and capacity study. Mr. Gerke.
Mayor and members of the City Council, as you know, at the airport every day, we serve the business community and tourism and people that fly in for sporting events and all that. But recently, we've had a great increase in flight training. And that's really due to the national shortage of pilots. So to try to adjust to these things, we're bringing in a consultant of Quadrex Aviation. And we're asking that Dave Byers come in and guide us through this process to help try to come up with solutions and standard operating procedures to address these issues. And I can also tell you that the university and the other flight school is working with us on this, along with the Airport Commission, to guide us through this process and assist us while we talk to the FAA and to the state and other agencies as we go through this process. The total contract is $29,812, and the university will be assisting us 50, 50 with this consulting service.
Any questions for Mr. Gerke?
I think this is another one of those need to do, need to have the data to be able to make the right decision going forward. So it's, I very much appreciate all the work that's gone into starting to collect that data. And so I'll move that we approve.
Second.
Mr. Gerke, we have a motion and a second, real quick discussion. Do you have a timeline? I may have missed that, but what's the timeline on this to come back?
Yes, we've asked him to complete this in about a 15-week period. We want to have this in place by August 1, so that before the next fall semester, when we really get a lot of students, that those standards would be in place.
Can I request that when this report comes back, that we have a joint meeting of the Airport Commission and the City Council? And at that time, discuss this report, but really also discuss the vision of where we are at the airport with this information that's going to be coming in and let the Airport Commission hear from the council and the council hear from the Airport Commission.
Yes, Mayor, and that's part of the contract, for him to have those type of meetings.
Okay. All right, motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Ice, or, excuse me, hi. I'm looking at a thing that just came across that's talking about ice and hail, so. I'm monitoring my storm here. 2019 Planning Grant Subrecipient Agreement. This is Community Development.
Aye.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, we have our 2019 Planning Grant. This is our second and our last subrecipient grant. CD is the holder of the Continuum of Care in the community. With the subrecipient is HARC. HARC is the 501(c)(3), that's the large organization of 65 service providers. So we're a little bit, kind of like the IRS, you know, it's the money from the year before. And we started the 18 grant at the end of 19, and this is the 19 grant. Started beginning now of '21, and this is it. Next year, HARC will be the holder of the Continuum of Care. So this is before you now to agree to let us sign it, and they'll carry out that planning grant. And then probably by July, they'll be the holder of the COC. And then they can move forward.
Any questions?
Let me ask just one question about HARC. Is HARC meeting regularly?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a, you know, COC committee.
Okay.
And we have an executive committee that meets every month.
Okay.
We have subcommittees, workgroup committees, service committee, a variety of different housing, you know, sort of committees. Like I'm the chair of ranking and review.
Big meeting in here, is that, we haven't done that?
Well, they went to Zoom a year ago. Now, that's still happening.
I'd like to get in the loop of that again. It seems like, I know yet last year was an anomaly, but I'd like to be aware of when.
You mean you want the invite to the executive committee?
Well, no, it doesn't have to be the executive meeting. I like the idea, when we were all meeting in here and we were, there were people sharing what was going on in the different groups. I really, if we get back to that, I'd really like to, you know.
There is the general membership meeting quarterly.
Okay.
So now, they took on new members.
Okay.
You know, and there's still about 65 to 70 members. There are some new agencies coming in.
Yeah.
And we just actually received the ESGCV2 money, which THDA just opened that up to new organizations, which is nice. So nine organizations just received money. Now, that continuum is for Rutherford County also. It's beyond the city. So that's nice. They've gotten some more, there's been, you know, more housing money coming through. So, but the COC will move over. I was just telling Mr. Whitaker yesterday. Just about by July 1 fiscal year. Yeah, so, you know, the general membership meeting was just held January. But by Zoom.
By Zoom, okay. Okay. All right, well, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now have several coming from Mr. Griffiths. So we have Chafin Place Improvements. Mr. Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. A few years ago, we had a study completed at the Chafin Place, Old Fort and Thompson Lane intersection, recommended a number of improvements. Couple of years ago, we implemented the improvements on the Thompson Lane side. We would now like to move forward with the Chafin Place improvements. Accordingly, we've requested and received a design contract from ELI in the amount of $112,000, $112,360 for the design of these improvements. It's a little bit more involved than the work that we did on Thompson, Thompson Lane. We expect that we'll have to purchase a little bit of right-of-way due to the proximity of some of the businesses there. The funding was included for this in the 2022 CIP, and the staff recommends approval. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Griffiths?
Sumo. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to acquisition of right of way and easements for Warrior Drive. Mr. Griffith.
We've started construction on the Warrior Drive intersection improvements at New Salem Highway. The project's moving along well, happy to report. We require some right of way and utility easements along three total parcels to be able to complete the, the project on the opposite side of the road. We've used estimated values to, for the cost of the acquired right of way. We've included a table in the back there with the, with the recommended amounts from the two, or for the two properties. One of those properties, which is currently getting ready to develop, is a, is a donation, which we, we appreciate. The cost associated with, with acquisitions on this project, we estimate to be $24,500, and was included in the 2019 CIP budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We now have the final change order for Robert Rose Drive Right Turn Lane.
Yes, this is our, our final item for the night. We completed the Robert Rose Right Turn Lane last year. Bell has submitted their final change order, which levels out the, the items that were used, the quantities that were used for the project, and also adds 90 days for, for the contract time from the original completion to date. Bell, as many contractors did in the area, suffered during the, with manpower issues during the pandemic, but we're, we're very happy to, to say the project is complete, and I think that it looks, turned out very well. The construction cost increased from, by $48,681 with this change order, and it, it can be accommodated for the funds allocated by the 2019 CIP budget. With that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Griffith, I'll just make the comment, that's been a great addition, it's been a great project, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. If there are no questions, I'll make a move to approve.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chris. All right, we'll now move to item 19, the Insurance Brokerage and Risk Management Services. Mr. Tucker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I come before you this evening to request your approval of a contract for insurance brokerage and risk management services, and awarding that contract to Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services. Back on February 4th, city council approved my request to solicit proposals for these services via the, via a request for competitive sealed proposals. The city received several proposals, though some of those were non-responsive. Staff evaluated the two responsive proposals, one submitted by Gallagher and the other submitted by Willis Towers Watson Southeast Incorporated. Both the proposals were excellent, but ultimately, it was, it is staff's recommendation that on the basis of cost, primarily that, that the contract be awarded to Gallagher. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the evaluation process or the contract. I will note that the party, since I submitted this, the, I've approved the, the contract terms and conditions, and so we're ready to move forward that, with that.
Any questions?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an agreement for fencing installation and relocation at Miller Coliseum and Caroline Farms Drive for Caroline Farms.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Kayla Walker with Project Development, and I'm here representing staff for the approval of the contract between Premier Fence and the City of Murfreesboro in the amount of This contract is for the installation of approximately 3,000 linear feet of fence from Thompson Lane to the northern property line of Miller Coliseum. This fencing is a part of the North Murfreesboro Greenway Connector Project and is identified in the city's Greenways, Blueways, and Bike Ways Master Plan as connecting Seagull Schools, Miller Coliseum, and Seagull Park. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we now have a guard rail replacement.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Street Department seeks your approval for the contract between the city and Lew Inc. We took a couple of bids back in February. Lew was the low bidder at $131,753. Obviously, this helps the street department in managing any damaged guard rails that comes to town, so I'm here today to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we now have purchase of rock salt.
Hey, yes, sir. As you all well know, that we used plenty of this this past winter, so we're seeking your approval to replenish our stockpile. We always currently use the T-DOT contract and that amount at 1,500 tons to obviously replenish what we had used is $122,490. So we're seeking your approval to make this purchase.
So move. Second.
Motion is, motion is second. Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Appreciate y'all's work. All right, any licensing?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Any board and commission appointments? Any statements?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Any other business from staff?
None here.
Any other business from council? I have one item. We've, I see that look, Craig. I'm not going to surprise anything. You know, over the years, I just wrote down if, and this is just in my time here, I wrote